And emotional trauma. And as a parent, it is incredibly difficult to watch your child suffer from such a traumatic event, especially when it occurs at school, a place where they should feel safe and protected. My concern today is not just about my daughter's experience, but about the broader issue of how student conduct, particularly physical violence, is addressed under policy rule 443. In the case of my daughter, the assault was severe and unquestionably warranted expulsion under district policy. Yet despite the gravity of the incident, the students involved will be allowed to return to school on January 2nd, following a short suspension. The decision is deeply troubling. It sends a message that serious physical violence will not be met with consequences that it deserves. And it is difficult to understand why students who cause harm, especially in such a violent manner, can return to the same school environment with minimal consequences. This is especially concerning when considering the safety of other students who may feel at risk, knowing that the same individuals who have harmed their peers are allowed to return to the middle school without facing meaningful consequences and repercussions. I am here tonight to urge the board to review our disciplinary policies and take action to revise the guidelines regarding student conduct and discipline, particularly when it comes to physical assault. The current policy is inadequate, at best, in addressing the seriousness of such incidents and fails to protect the safety and well-being of all students. The playground should be a safe space for children to learn, socialize, and grow. And right now, under the current disciplinary structure, it is not. I believe that we must have a system in place where students who commit violent acts face clear and meaningful consequences. These consequences should be appropriate to the severity of the incident, and they should take into account the lasting physical and emotional impact on the victim. A simple suspension or short-term removal from school does not send the message that physical violence is unacceptable or that students will be held accountable for their actions. As a parent, I want to ensure that my daughter and all students can attend school without fear of being harmed by others. This is not just about one child or one incident. It is about creating a culture of respect and safety where every child feels respected and protected. So I ask the board to take a close look at how our policy, as it is pertaining to our student conduct and discipline, and to revise the policy to ensure that serious offenses like physical assault are met with strong, consistent, and meaningful consequences. This will help ensure that our schools are places where all children can thrive in a safe and supportive environment. I thank you for your attention, and I hope that we can work together to make Platteville schools safer for every student.
I'll pass. Thanks.
Okay. You bet. We'll move on to information and discussion items. First item up is the 2023 State Report Card presentation.
In the board packet, there are several documents that go into really deep detail with what the state report card provides us as a data source. What we are going to do is have an overview from Brad Brogley, and I will work through this presentation.
So on the screen with the slides presentation, thank you so much for this opportunity to talk about the school report cards, the district and school report cards. Lots to celebrate tonight, lots to talk about. We started this journey with professional learning communities in 2019, and coupled with our inclusion commitments, we've really, on our You Belong statements, we've really come a long way with a number of great things to celebrate. So as we move on to the next slide here, you'll see that we're going to talk about all of the results from the different report cards, talk about those four priority areas in each of those report cards, as well as sharing those next steps. Here's the accountability relating, rating categories. And then if we move to the next slide, you'll see how our district and high school, middle school, and Westview report cards have performed over the last few years. This is the first year that I can report in the district that all of our schools and our district report card all showed growth. So congratulations, job well done. The priority weighting, as you look at the school report card, and this is something that many of the board members have heard me say before, but there are four priority areas. You would think if it's a score of 100, the four priority areas, each one would be 25. That's not the case. The number of students that are economically disadvantaged impacts the numbers for the priority weighting for the achievement and the growth. That's one reason why, when you take a look at the school report card and you look at that number in the upper right-hand corner, you can't really compare the Platteville School District to other districts because it's not apples-to-apples, because the number of students that are economically disadvantaged looks different in every district and every building. Once again, if you look at all of those, and if you look at the key in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that it's district, high school are on the top rung, followed by the middle school and Westview. Even if you take a look at the priority weighting for the middle school, you'll notice that the achievement slice of that pie is only 17.7, and the growth is 32 and change. So therefore, one of the things that we've decided as an admin team and as a leadership group would be, we really need to double down on the growth, what's happening from year to year. Yes, the achievement is very, very important, but we also know that if more of our report card is going to be weighted on growth, then we need to be paying attention to those kinds of things. As you continue to move on, you'll see the district report card, the priority weightings, you'll see the achievement, the growth, and the target group. And then, oh, this is what we want to do here with these. So when you look at these two slides here, you'll notice that in 2023, so if you go back one, Mr. Babel, you'll notice that the growth was 62 or 63.2, and then the target group was 51.4. Those both increased in the 2024 slide. Over the next few slides, all I'm going to be doing is kind of comparing things from '23 to '24. So if Mr. Babel, if you could kind of just toggle back and forth between those two different schools. So the next two would be the high school. Growth in 2023 was 63.2. That improved to 71.7. The target group improved from 45.6 to 63.3. One of the things that you'll notice in the achievement, for those of you that are noticing that the district and the high school achievement stayed the same from '23 to '24, that was as a result of our cut scores changing on our assessment. And what the department of public instruction chose to do this year was kind of freeze the achievement score if you achieve the same as you did from a year ago, because what they don't want to see is, you know, those cut scores changed. So we want to make sure that they kind of level out over time. We want to see a second point. Right now, we only have one point in time with that achievement, so they're just going to say, hey, it's going to go back to and revert back to last year's score. And then next year, when we get that second data point, we'll kind of see where that achievement score is. However, when you go to the middle school and Westview, you'll notice that our achievement scores did increase a little bit from '23 to '24, and that's because we actually outgained the, what happened with the increase in the cut scores. That's super exciting to hear. Once again, it's not that the high school and district didn't gain with their achievement scores, it's that the middle school and Westview outgained what the cut score increase would Now, when we're at Westview, you'll notice the growth, 89.7 to 93.5, target group, 90.5 And then if we get to these slides here, these are the slides that I really, really like of all the different slides that we've put together with this. When you look at 2023, the value-added scores for ELA, one of the things that you'll notice would be, it's on a 0 to 6 continuum, and three is average growth. If you have the bubbles that are bubbled in, that are shaded in, that's what you would want to see. You would want to see at least a score of three or higher. What that's sharing is, is that the growth is really, from one year to the next, is improving a great deal. When you slide this to the 2024, you'll notice that a number of the scores changed to blue. Can you just go back real quick? Because this is really, these slides are really powerful. If you look at this and then scroll to this, it's awesome. Great job, staff. Great job, admin team. Then when you look at the math scores, same type of thing, you'll see a few more blues here. And then when you scroll to the 2024, we've already kind of talked, and we know that we've got an area that we want to continue to take a look at, but overall, our scores are continuing to grow, and we're just seeing a lot of wonderful things with this value-added score in both math and reading. The achievement scores are coming up next. This is just kind of taking a cross-section of all the achievement scores from 2023, and then on the next slide, you'll see, here's how everything improved in 2024. Same type of thing with the growth scores there. 2023, here's where we're at, and here's where we're growing to in 2024. Kind of a broken record, but we're just seeing a lot of wonderful things. Target group is different. The target group, the scoring with that is, it's based, it's not based off of economically disadvantaged students. They actually have a scoring that's set up for you, 50% on growth, and then you see the other denominations there. Once again, doubling down on that growth from one year to the next. The target group is defined as the group of students on the previous year's assessment that scored in the bottom quartile or the bottom 25%. So these are our most academically fragile students that we need to be taking a really close look at and seeing how are they growing from year to year. As you can see, from 2023 to 2024, a lot of great changes there. All four target groups grew. This is 1/4 of the school report card. Coming up here, the last portion of it would be the on-track-to-graduation portion of the school report card. These indicators, therefore, reported, reporting only, they don't impact the school report card, but you can see some wonderful growth in the post-secondary preparation. We've got three years of growth in those areas that are listed there. And then on the next slide, you'll see three years of growth for the arts course information. And then as an admin team, we're just taking a look at, as a district, you know, you've heard Mr. Babel say this a number of times, starting with the Crown, we're identifying where the students are, and we're going to make at least one year's growth for all students in the Platteville School District. Kind of going back to that idea that growth is weighted so much more extensively on the school report card. High school, they've got some things listed there, as well as the middle school and Westview and Neil Wilkins. Any questions or any clarifications? Anything I can go over again? I did go kind of fast, but as I'm looking around the room, I'm seeing a lot of familiar faces that have heard a lot of these things before, but really wanted to celebrate the growth and the achievements that our staff and students have been able to show us.
Real quick, if you're able to, could you talk about why the state made the decision when it comes to achievement, to use the cut score from '23 to '24? I know you talked about the data points and things like that, but what's the rationale behind that? Because it doesn't seem to give a real accurate representation right now of it. It's frustrating.
Yeah. And I think what they were, one of the things that I'm, in the reading that I've done, is they were afraid that if they allowed for the big jump in the cut score to take place, then what would the next year? They like to always have two and three years of data before they kind of share what's going on. So they just sort of said, you know what, let's keep the achievement scores at where it was at last year, and then next year, when we get that second point, we'll kind of share where things are going.
I think if I can help with your question as well, and just why'd they do it? And part of that is, as this federal expectation is written out, each state has to periodically evaluate and see if they need to adjust all of the, everything that deals with this. One of the decisions that the Department of Public Instruction made was, they, and I hope I'm saying this correctly, they were aligned with the NAEP scores, which is a national measurement, and they found that they could get more valuable feedback and data if they did more localized, more state-level scores. So that's the reason why they changed it this time. I can't explain to you why they've changed it all the other times, but this time, it was part of the federal expectation that they do that.
Yeah. And they typically, and they typically do this at the same time. So the ELA and math standards have been rewritten again, and with that adoption of a new set of standards, it gives an opportunity to then change the cut scores at the same time. And now, over a course of a period of years, you can actually have more longitudinal data. But in that first year, they're going to be kind of conservative with how they report out things.
And I get that it's beyond our control in terms of what they, you know, DPA wants to align or whatnot, but it's frustrating because, like you had said, this has happened several times, so it never really gives you an accurate data point, because looking back, looking forward, what you have now, it's hard to set goals, especially in that area of achievement, which is so important. Just looking for a little bit, yeah, thank you for both of you for that, a little more explanation in terms of why that one point always seems to be the one that's messed with.
But what we have done, knowing that this will continue to evolve.
Yep.
What we have done is, we go down and we look at the data by question. Does that align with our essential learning outcome, align with the state outcomes? We've talked about that, it's at the beginning of each school year, where our staff gets to sit down with a data expert. So it's valuable data within this whole testing process. The most invaluable piece of this data is that number in the upper right-hand corner. What we care about is how our students are learning down to that level. And so, we know that's happening, but we have found a way to still use this information to improve our instruction.
And I think the one thing that has, we've seen this trend over the last few years, the way the school report card reports things out with the priority areas, we, the Platteville School District has always been a high-performing school district, and that will never change. But what we're doing a better job of over the last few years is doubling down on that growth score. And if that's how we're being measured, we're definitely going to make sure that our students are not only achieving high, but they're also growing from year to year in all of those pieces. So that's another thing, another reason why you're seeing these types of scores and results.
Any other questions for Mr. Brogley?
If one comes up later, feel free to email them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the second information and discussion item, which is a student services update.
Greetings. Anyways, this is the student services update for 2024, '25. Usually, for this, I like to start with sort of an overview of where we're at in terms of personnel this year. I have kind of, on the left-hand side, the professional-level personnel listed. On the right-hand side, I have special education assistants. Presently, across each of the buildings, and I've broken it down by numbers per each building, we have 30 special education assistants. There's been some reduction in some of those positions. About 2.6 positions were reduced since last year, and one position was repurposed. Now, how those positions are reduced, because I'll go on to the next slide real quick. How those positions are reduced, and we've talked about this a little bit before, these positions exist out of legal requirement ultimately. So a student has an IEP, and let's say that they have profound needs, whether it is independent living needs, whether it is self-care needs, whether it is behavioral needs, there could be a myriad of needs. And let's say that the IEP team determines that the student requires a one-to-one support. Well, if that is in an IEP, that is a legally binding document in and of itself, where the district would therefore be obligated to provide that support. Now, out of the 30 paraprofessionals, not all of those are one-to-one support. So I think that begs the question of, well, where does the legally-driven piece come in? There's also what's referred to as proximal support. And proximal support would be something like, if you have, let's say, a couple students, and let's say that a couple students do not require someone to be by them 100% of the time, one-to-one, but they might benefit due to their needs to having a second adult to provide support in the room, whether it's for behavioral support and queuing, whether it's because of academic needs, their program necessitates that there should be another person involved. And these are ultimately decisions that are driven by IEP teams, they involve parents, they involve teachers and related service providers and administrators. That would be a proximal support need. So in essence, the two reasons that result in those paraprofessionals kind of arriving at that number and at time shrinking, purely driven by IEP. When they, when the numbers shrink, a lot of the time, what's enabled us that capacity to do that is either students have moved, or students, as they go up through the ranks. And I've looked at some of our data historically when it comes to the amount of one-to-ones at each grade level, and I'm not going to spend too much time, Jim, if you wouldn't mind going back to the next, the previous slide, is you can see, once you get up to the high school, there really isn't too many paraprofessional staff, and that's good information to see, because that shows us that as students move up, the level of personnel support required to ensure their success is kind of going down, which is a good trend to see, as opposed to the personnel being increases. Now, every now and then, there's bubbles that might cause that, but for the most part, over the years, when I've looked at kind of our spread of supports, that's how it's, that's how it's been portrayed, which is good. Going to the next slide, we have some trend data. And the first one that we have is enrollment trends. And for this, really, what this I've done is, I've tried to capture by just different populations, by gender, by race, ethnicity. And within the graphs, there's percentages, but then within the tables, it'll give you the specific numbers of students represented by year. Goes down to ELL status, disability status. And we'll go over to, I broke down two cohort trends, and part of why I did this is it's going to tie into when Michelle and Jamie come up. So, Jim, if you wouldn't mind jumping into the first one for English Language Arts.
I'm currently lost, Max.
Sorry about that. Go back to the presentation.
Working it.
There we go.
And scroll down. All right, right there. So what I've done is, this would be first grade cohort of 2022, so their graduation year is 2033, which definitely makes me feel up there in years when I was doing these charts. But when I look at this, I kind of put a graph right here, so this would be students who are in the developing range, the orange. Approaching would be yellow. Meeting is that kind of purplish shade. Advanced would be blue. This is, this follows each of these specific grades, and this contains not all students, this is students with special needs, from year to year as they go up. Now, what you'll notice, if you kind of scroll down the trends real quick, is there's a lot of kind of ups and downs and things like that. This data is still useful to us. It's state assessment data, this is ELA, I have another one for math. It's useful to us because even though in each of these years, this population that occurred this year, let's say, I can't really see the small numbers, there's small things there, but this may have been a slightly different group of students than the following year because of the fact that you have students who move out and move in. But that don't mean you can't use the data. Very often, how we're using this data is during our vertical team meetings with the student services cohort, these documents are part of a data dump that we have, that we use to kind of hone in on, oh, okay, so we've seen that there's been a decline here, so let's look into this in some of the more local data that we have that kind of goes more so into finite skills. Because the state assessment, it'll give you some broad information on how students are performing by question, but what we're trying to do within our group now is trying to improve the efficiency of our intervention groups and how we support our students who are struggling by fluency, by comprehension, by different subareas that are a little bit more specific, in hope that if we can address those skills on some of those state performance tests, we will see an increase in performance there. Because a lot of those state measures, they're not going to show as much how a student is doing on fluency and matters like that. Jim, if we go back to the trend data, I also have disciplinary removal trends. Overall, many of these trends are going in a positive direction, just broken down by different subarea. One of the areas that I think that we're going to be focusing on is ELL status, because a lot of our trends, when we look at percentage of students within that population who have been removed for disciplinary reasons for any duration, a lot of our overall trends for students with disabilities, different demographic groups are trending down, which is good. But when we look at our group of students who are English language learners, we see that there's been an uptick. That has also been a population that has increased pretty exponentially over the past couple of years. So when we look at that data, how we use it is, when we talk to our behavior teams, that data is used to hone in, okay, this is obviously a group that we need to do a better job supporting, so within our collaboration teams, how can we do that? All right. On to slide five, Trauma-Informed Care Trainings. During the 2023-24 school year, we survey, we have a trauma-informed within our district, we surveyed all of our staff to determine what specific areas under the umbrella of trauma-informed care would they like more training in. Back a couple years ago, we did a mass eight-hour training on trauma-informed care. It was kind of long, so we wanted to find a way to fine-tune it. We took staff input, and we found out that self-regulation and relationships were kind of the two areas that the staff wanted more training in. So within that trauma team, we produced those trainings, and we provided them to each school at different points throughout the school year. All right. And now, Michelle Kellogg, our school psychologist, and Jamie Andrews, our program supporter, are here to kind of talk about some of the work we've been doing with some of our intervention groups.
Yeah, so with the support of Dr. Long and the building principals, Jamie and I have been working on really unifying our response intervention system, our RTI system. So if we think about those three big main ideas of a professional learning community, focus on collaboration, right? So last school year, we really prioritized having a time each month where all the individuals on this list you see here would have a designated time to collaborate with one another on a Wednesday. Historically, that, it hasn't always happened, hasn't always been able to happen. You know, conversations can happen in passing, but really having that designated time, most importantly, for special education teachers to, you know, be in the same room with the interventionists and the multilingual learner and teachers, is really valuable. Oftentimes, these individuals are servicing students with similar needs and our students with the highest level of need. And so, having an opportunity for everyone to have a time to collaborate and kind of share expertise, we felt was really valuable, so we really wanted to establish that. So we did that last year. And the next focus that we've been really working on, you can go ahead to the next slide, is those other two big main ideas of a professional learning community. So the focus on results and the focus on learning. So when we're able to meet together as intervention team, we're reviewing that student data, and what's important about how we're reviewing that is we're looking at it across an entire grade level. So when we're able to meet together as intervention team, we're reviewing that student data. And what's important about how we're reviewing that is we're looking at it across an entire grade level. So we're looking at the skills a student's working on and the intervention that they're receiving, and we're not always looking at what their label might be or, you know, who might be servicing them. We're really honing in on that data that we have with the student so that then we can look at things more holistically, which can give us an opportunity to kind of more flexibly group students and group students based on similar needs, again, not by labels but by needs. It also gives us an opportunity to have everybody in the same room for, if we find a student who's, you know, not progressing at that aggressive rate that we want them to be progressing at, now we have a lot of individuals in the room to help try to problem-solve that situation. So continuing to review that data together as a whole grade level and continuing to work together collaboratively as an intervention team has been really helpful and a process we've been really invested in, so.
I'll just chime in one little part. From being a special ed teacher to now kind of supporting our special education teachers, it's been really cool to see them bridge with their Tier 3 team and the interventionist within the building to collaborate around the same group of kids. And so I think we're just doing a good job of building the capacity of a lot of our teachers for some of our most vulnerable kids. So it's been cool to see us come together for that.
Thank you. So the next slide that I have, just talking about crisis prevention training, we have two trainers within district, myself and John Richter, who's the behavioral specialist over at Westview Elementary. Back in 2023-24, him and me provided over 40 hours of CPI training within district. Thus, this year, so far, we've provided about 28 hours to staff, and we're probably going to be providing more. January 17th is another date that's coming up in which I'm offering another training. CPI, Crisis Prevention, it covers a lot of things. It covers how to respond to students who are experiencing anxiety on a base level. It also covers extreme incidents in which there could be safety concerns as well. And it also covers how to debrief, how to identify when someone's in crisis, even if there are latent signs, and what are precipitating factors that may contribute to a student being in crisis. It also is an opportunity for us to go over our policies when it comes down to matters that we don't like to engage in, such as a seclusion and restraint, and really take a good, hard look at those policies and walk through them with staff as well as our procedures so that they're familiar as well. And also, at the bottom of the slide, I just provided an update regarding our interagency partners. These are interagency agreements that we have with different counseling agencies within the region that are able to come into our schools and deliver counseling so that parents don't have to worry about making appointments outside of school hours. It really kind of takes that burden off the parent where the child still gets to be in school, but at the same time, they get their counseling without having that time sort of as a barrier. All right, next slide. And special education assistant trainings. We've provided quite a few over the years, but this year, we're doing something a little bit different. Last year, I surveyed all of our paraprofessional staff and created sort of a heat map about different areas that they would value more training in. Two of the big areas that came out, behavior management as well as walking through different behavioral scenarios. That kind of is advantageous because those two things can go hand-in-hand quite easily. We also have met with each of the spec ed teaching teams within district and garnered their input as well to help us kind of fine-tune where they might see what types of strategies we might include as well. And what we're going to do that's a little bit different, historically, we've provided trainings by having people come in. I've provided the trainings, Jamie's provided the trainings, teachers have provided them, we've done webinars and all kinds of stuff. What we're going to do this year that's a little bit different is we're going to provide a training on these topics, but we're also going to involve the case managers and provide some opportunities for them to talk about encircled groups on how they're utilizing the strategies we share. And we're also going to kind of check in on, all right, at the end of the year, when we sit and have our conversations about how the year went, how did you apply these trainings? What are some artifacts that you used from these trainings that helped you get the job done when you needed them? Our hope there is to not only hone in on some areas that our paraprofessionals would value receiving additional training in, but also kind of ensure that the training that we're providing has some consistent satience or that the strategies, we have some awareness that they're being utilized, and if there's still questions, there's opportunities for us to provide guidance and help in the future. And then the last slide, this is our academic career plan, our ACP plan for our district. This is something that we will update different pieces of. We really built it up back in 2021-22. So a lot of our processes, we streamlined back then. The one thing that we did update this year would be, sorry, Jim, go back up a bit. There you go, that graphic. This slide to make sure that our labor market analysis, because your academic career plan needs to contain one of these per state statute, we've updated many of the statistics that were here. Some of the statistics that were there were, well, they weren't old in 2021-22, but they would be now. So we've made sure they were up to date. I believe the changes we made last year was in the slide below it. We just added some additional things in terms of what opportunities we offer as a district within our assets. I know I also went kind of fast. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
About our social work position.
Yep.
A year ago, we, a case was made to our board that we had need for 120% coverage and service for our social work needs for our students. We're now down, just to staffing changes, we're down to 60% staff.
Yep.
I don't assume, I assume, I have not seen a decrease in need of services
Nope.
in our student population. So how are we, how are we managing, how are we planning on serving our
Couple different ways, couple different ways. Some of those responsibilities, we fanned out to Michelle, to Jamie, some of that goes to myself. Some of it, when it comes down to, in more of like the support side of things, but in terms of the, when we look at, I'm trying to think of what I was about to say, and I just lost it. When we looked at the social work position over the summer, too, the one that we presently have, we did fine-tune it to where it was kind of what that position would have time to do. Now, I understand fully, that's less than optimal. Some of this is related to the budgetary situation. Some of it, though, when we looked at how we kind of fanned out some of the responsibilities, such as how do we find someone who does a risk assessment? Well, we started out by using Michelle, but we might need to find others to help train them as well. So some of that stuff, we're kind of working on, tuning up the pieces as they come. Another thing that we did, though, was last year, the, one of the teaching positions that we hired over at Neil Wilkins was to double as an interventionist. So something that we're presently doing is trying to construct some systems that are similar to what John Richter does over at Westview and trying to get them up and running there. Now, that is a process in work because this is our first year doing it, and it's a newer teacher who's with us. She's not new, but it's her first year with us. So some of that stuff, just by the growing pains of a new position, figuring that out, I'm hoping that we can kind of solve some of that. But yeah, that would kind of be it in terms of how we're working to address that.
Any other questions for Dr. Long?
I just have a quick question on Dr. Long, just regarding the special education assistance that were reduced. How does that affect our school's ability to continue support to others? Because of course, there have been times where when those spec eds are not available, then that does kind of, it kind of inhibits how the students are receiving support. I want to know, has, is it something that is negatively affecting or?
I don't think so because a lot of the numbers that we reduced were due to students leaving. So a lot of that support apparatus, as it was, like when we had those positions before, those positions were calibrated for that existing body of students and their needs. So when some of those students leave, it kind of reduces some of it. Another thing, though, and this is something that comes up the other day, and this is something that we're actually working with many of the spec ed teams to get used to doing a little bit more so, and it's very helpful, and every spec ed team should do it, when it comes down to consideration of when to hire additional paraprofessionals, for example. Because that's a very easy thing, too, for a district to have run away on you as well, is we look at, when there is that need, we do another hard look at our IEPs. We look at where our supports are placed, not just within one caseload, the caseload is asking across the building, in terms of, we pulled the whole spec ed team together and we have, we all look at the schedules, we look at the IEPs. Sometimes, it could be, and this is part of why we look at the IEPs, IEPs, if you're going to change what's called placement or where a kid receives services, you got to have a meeting. There's a friend or butts about it. Let's say you look at an IEP for a child who received proximal support based upon a decision that was made the previous school year, right? And let's say that because due to, I don't want to say busyness, because during the time of these decisions, this is how it's done, this is how it comes about, but let's say that the case manager, just in the fray of business, you know, has, I don't want to say hasn't been doing their diligence, but you're not looking to call an IEP all the time, right? But let's say that there's this need that's there with staff. If they look in some of the IEPs and we're looking across it, and we start seeing, oh, wait a second, this kid has 30 minutes of proximal support dedicated in ELA, but they've progressed and they therefore don't need it anymore. Sometimes that frees up staff, too. And we see that, too, happen. And one of the things that Jamie's working on with us as well is when it comes down to building to building, because sometimes you have a case manager who might make a decision of what does this kid need in this other building? Now, sometimes they're spot-on accurate. Sometimes that might, when the child goes to another building, need some refining based upon their experience or a lot of factors, how summer went, you name it. It could go the other way, too. I mean, you could need more support following that discussion. But usually, when we're trying to calibrate those supports, it's not just, like, we don't just look at the total number of people and where they're at. We also look at the existing student need, what's in the IEPs, and sometimes it kicks out that, eh, we might need to make some adjustments so we're not, yes, there's this kid over here who needs help, but are we allocating our resources in such a way to address things in which maybe that kid don't need help anymore, so we can put them back over here? That sort of stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Long? Thank you. We'll move on to items on the consent agenda.
5A is the adoption. 5B would be the minutes of previous meetings. 5C, the financial report and bills of the month for November of 2024, in which total receipts $483,446.92. Disbursements, $2,284,322.0 with all the line items to follow. Traditionally, this is what November looks like, and this is why we haven't recently, but in the past, the district has had to short-term borrow during November. It's just how the funding is released and when our bills come due. We also have our donations totaling $16,755. There, we're very grateful for everybody who donates towards our students in our district. Resignation High School Cross-Country Coach, resignation High School Musical Director, resignation Special Education Assistant. Letter H, the new hire Co-Curricular Assistant Forensic Speech Coach, and all of the recommendations are included in there. And then letter I is a new endeavor for our school in which second semester, we're going to have a business education intern as opposed to a student teacher.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Kurt. I heard Ashley for the second, on the adoption as the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, looking for an adoption and a second for, or, excuse me, a motion, a second for the adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keisha, second by Matt, to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto action items. First item up is the school safety plan.
School safety plan, part of Act 143 is an annual requirement of our school district in our partnership with the Platteville Police Department. Officer Jared is responsible for preparing and then also executing the expectations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Betsy, second by Steve, approve the 2425 School Safety Plan, Act 143 as presented. Any questions or comments on that one?
It does say that there's maybe discussion to meet in early January. Do you have a date for that, for their next meetings?
Is it in the safety assessments?
Mm-hmm.
I can find that date and get it to the board.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto item B, conference realignment.
Mike Foley, High School Activities Director, will have a brief presentation about a potential
All right. Historically, the SWC Conference has scheduled non-conference games with smaller schools from the Southwest Wisconsin Athletic League in the Six Rivers Conference due to geographical proximity. As of right now, we go out and we schedule those games. However, in late 2023, the Six Rivers Conference committed to a superconference for basketball, baseball, and softball, which locks their schools into an 18-conference game schedule, leaving only six non-conference games for basketball and eight each for baseball, softball. That limits Southwest Wisconsin Conference, our conference, we have six teams. We have to search for 14 non-conference basketball games, 14 non-conference baseball, softball, and 14 soccer non-conference games. So we go out and reach for La Crosse, Bassalem, Madison Schools, Menona Grove, we even go as far as the Columbus and Lake Mills to play schools our size. We are, the athletic directors got together and we collaborated into forming a new conference. And if you notice, the new conference is right here. The schools that would be involved in it would be Finnemore, Mineral Point, Cuba City, Darlington, Prairie Deschene, Lancaster River Valley, Dodgeville, Richland Center, and Platteville. These are all geographically close together. This will promote a 10-conference schedule, or 10-conference schools, so it'll be 18-conference games. And then we would also be able to go out and search for six non-conference games. We did kind of take a look at the Six Rivers. When we do a solution, or when we do a project like this with conferences, we have to come up with a solution to the WIAA. So basically, we have to do the WIA's work in order to do that. So we developed the Six Rivers, that's pretty comparable, then also the Ridge and Valley, such as, to go into the Ridge and Valley is Bosqueville and Riverdale, that would be from the SWAL, and then moving Southwestern in the Six Rivers West and Iowa Grant in the Six Rivers East. So basically, the SWAL conference will be dissolved. We went to the SWAL back last April, or last February, and we discussed it with their principals and athletic directors. So when they get a chance to say, we had no idea that we were doing this, that is a false conversation because we had two representatives from our conference go to the SWAL conference and pitch this to them. So we're hoping that this goes into effect, all of our athletic directors in our conference. We voted on this on October 10th. The principals are all in favor of this. As a conference, we thought that it would be beneficial if all the school boards, Dodgeville, Prairie Deschene, everybody, school boards voted on this and approved this, we can take it one more step to the WIA. This would not go into effect, it's a very slow-moving train at the WIA. It would go into effect during the 2029 and 2030 school year. So that's how slow this goes.
That quick?
Hoping it goes quicker, because football's every two years. And if you look at that, if we're talking about And if you look at that, if we're talking about baseball, softball, basketball, we're not talking football, and we're not talking wrestling. We would have to develop our own wrestling conference, because, as you noticed in those schools, Iowa Grant is a big wrestling school, so the wrestling would probably be Iowa Grant, Platteville Belmont, Richland Center, it'd just be our SWC conference. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them for you. But what we're hoping to do is, do you approve this, so we can go tomorrow to our meeting and we can send this into the WIAA?
Mr. Foley, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what you're saying, because I am not a sports enthusiast, so I am kind of, this is difficult for me. But what I heard you say, this is going to go into effect for the 2930 school year, does that have any effect on our sports conferences right now? Does that mean that this, the SWAL or the SWC, are they still in effect right now? They still get to play?
We play each other, and we play each other. As a matter of fact, we play all the schools that are, we want to come in. We play Finnemore non-conference, we play Mineral Point, we play Cuba City, we play Darlington. The only school that doesn't want to play us, that's the closest to us, is Southwestern and Iowa Grant, on things.
So in other words, our students still get to participate in these sports?
Yes. And I know it's just a sports conference, but this would be for everything, too. This would be math, music stuff. It would be a whole new conference.
Thank you.
How did the SWAL, like, when you went and presented, how did they respond to it?
It was a very ugly breakup back in the early 2000s, when SWC and SWAL were together. It was called the SWAL, Big and Small, and then they disbanded and they kind of took their ball and went home. And they formed their own conference and left us six big schools out to fend for ourselves. So we're hoping that we can do this and...
Get Mineral Point.
We're hoping the WA makes the decision, so they all have to follow it, much like we do with the football. I know, and the football, we just received an email today that Nugleris is leaving our football conference, and then we are going to have to do crossover games with the Eastern Suburban Conference.
Where's that from?
That is Pointe, that is Waterloo, that is Horicon, that is...
The other side of Madison.
The other side of Madison. Cambridge.
Just real quick, have you guys come up with a name yet?
I kind of threw out, I hope this off the record, I kind of threw out the Driftless 10 Conference. I've been throwing that out to our athletic directors, so hopefully...
So tonight, you're just looking for board support and that the WA with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the recommendation is to, for the conference realignment as presented. I need a motion in a second, please. So moved. Second. Motion by Kurt, I got Steve on the second, to approve the conference realignment for the SWC Conference as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item C, policy.
Second and final reading of Policy 443.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ben, to approve the second and final reading of updated 443 rule, Student Conduct and Discipline Plan as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto the employee handbook change.
This was forwarded through the Operations Committee last time. Explanation is there in front of us. The purpose is to benefit the employee this year, because this wasn't in the employee handbook when we started, but to the district, it gives us where we normally would be starting in late March, now we're starting in late January to recruit our replacement employees.
So the recommendation is to approve the 2425 Employee Handbook Language. Good for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Matt, to approve the 2425 Employee Handbook Language as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto letter E, Request for Consideration of Library Resources Committee.
We are in the middle of a book reconsideration process, and part of that is that the school board appoints a member onto that committee. It's a four-person committee, and the process that, in discussion with Board President, that we'd like to mirror tonight, would be similar to when we appoint a board member, in which each board member, when we start this nomination process, and please fill in when needed, Josh, each board member, you can either nominate a person, or you can second that nomination. Third option would be, you do neither. And that first round, let's say we have four candidates, because there are eight members here tonight, we have four candidates, we would have a paper ballot, and we'd end up with two finalists. If one of those finalists has the majority, so one of those finalists already has five, then the decision's done. We don't have to go to round two. If we have two finalists, and neither of those finalists has that majority, round two, we vote again. But it's just those two finalists, as opposed to if we had three or four candidates. So we try and work our way down, but if after one round, we have somebody that achieves the five, then that is that committee member.
One point of clarification is that each board member may either nominate or second somebody for this committee only once. So that means if you either nominate or you second somebody, then that's your decision for the night, and we can't have you doing two, three, four of them. Okay? That make sense?
Yep.
So at this time, I will open the, and I will record the names, and then we'll go from there, of the people. I will open it for nominations and then subsequent seconds, if we get any, for anybody that they would like from the board, for consideration of the Library Resources Committee, community service member, or community member.
I'd like to nominate Jessica Fritz.
We have a nomination by Kurt of Jessica Fritz. Do we have a second on that? I'll second it. Any other nominations?
I'd like to, how many Kelly Podak Francis? Oh, sorry. No problem.
I'd second that.
So we have a nomination by Matt of Kelly Podak Francis, and a second by Betsy. Any other nominations?
I'd nominate Lexi Hendrickson.
I have a nomination for Lexi Hendrickson by Ben. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have any other nominations?
Dr. Mark Rubel.
I would second that.
So we have a nomination by Ashley and a second by Steve of Dr. Mark Rubel. Any other nominations?
Sharon Clavin, Dr. Sharon Clavin.
So we have a nomination by Keisha of Dr. Sharon Clavin. I don't think we have anybody eligible that for a second on that, because everybody at this point has put in their votes, or their possibility. So at this point, the names that we can put into the ballot for the first round that received a nomination and a second are Jessica Fritz, Kelly Podak Francis, and Dr. Mark Rubel. So Lisa?
Just a question.
Yep.
All the people have consented to be on the committee.
My candidate, I ask, she spoke to me about it at the meeting.
Yes. Okay.
Can we have a discussion at all?
Yeah.
Can we get a quick overview on the three candidates and why we think they're good options? I guess I'm not familiar with all of them.
I will have the people who nominated them give their, let's go first. Kurt, Jessica Fritz.
Well, like you said, Jessica contacted me at the meeting that night, expressed her interest, and I believe that she's been involved with the library board in town also, and so she's been involved with other school district functions and been active as a parent, has three kids in the district. So I think the interest is sincere, and I think she would do a good job. That's why I nominated her.
Kelly Podak Francis, Matt?
Yeah, also another parent in the district, has students at the middle school, also serves on the city library board, very active in the community, very strong, you know, just really involved in the community, and I think would be a good advocate, and to be able to be, look at all the different sides of it.
Thank you. And Dr. Mark Rubel, Ashley?
Yep, so he's a retired professor from the university. He's been doing clinical psychology for years and is about to retire from that, or already did.
May have retired.
May have, yeah. He spent most of his career working on victims of physical or sexual abuse and perpetrators of physical and sexual abuse, and has a strong interest in making sure children have just very basic ideas about these topics and for what they are. I also think that it would be beneficial to have a male serving on the committee as well, knowing that we already have three females. I just feel like it would bring a different perspective as well.
Did anybody else that we did not hear from want to speak in particular to any of those three candidates? Okay, what I'll do is I'll pass, I'll go around, pass out the ballots. Please write down one name and one name only, and then we will go around and collect them. Oh, I'm gonna trip. I can tell that already.
I was wondering, you walked...
Yeah, it's gonna happen.
I wouldn't be doing that.
Here we go. Do you want me counting or not? Come on.
Yeah.
Very official cookie.
That's...
That's why it's official.
That's what I was looking at. All right. I assume that, but I didn't know. Okay. So at this point, we have a tie. What we do then is, because we have a tie, it's the majority that we are, we take it down to two. This time, it'll be Kelly Podak Francis and Dr. Mark Rubel. Those are the two that are still in the running.
What were the votes, as far as total votes?
Those two tied for three, the other one was two.
Thank you.
Dr. Mark Rubel received three votes, and Kelly Podak Francis received five. So at this point, I would take a, we have to vote on it, correct?
Yep.
I'll take a motion in a second for the recommendation to put, assign, excuse me, Kelly Podak Francis as the community member for the committee for request for the reconsideration of library resources.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Kurt and a second by Keisha. Any other questions and discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto item F, cancel the last July or January board meeting.
The January 22nd, 2025 regular board meeting, and it's due to the conflict with several board members attending the WASB convention along with members of the administrative team.
So are we looking at rescheduling or?
There is a turnaround quickly with February, in which I don't believe it'd be to the benefit.
So a motion by Ben, looking for a second. Motion by Ben, second by Matt to cancel the January 22nd, 2025 regular school board meeting due to conflict with the WASB Annual Convention as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto item F, cancel the last July or January board meeting.
The January 22nd, 2025 regular board meeting, and it's due to the conflict with several board members attending the WASB convention along with members of the administrative team.
So are we looking at rescheduling or?
There is a turnaround quickly with February, in which I don't believe it'd be to the benefit.
So a motion by Ben, looking for a second. Motion by Ben, second by Matt to cancel the January 22nd, 2025 regular school board meeting due to conflict with the WASB Annual Convention as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would entertain a motion in a second to go into closed session pursuant to State Statute 19.8 by a parent C, question of consideration and action as appropriate regarding staffing and programming and also regarding superintendent evaluation of contract. A motion in a second, please. So I got a motion by Matt, and I think it was Ashley, on the second. This requires a roll call vote. Yes, Ben?
Yes.
Keisha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.